...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full house tonight. I want to thank Troop 23 for joining us. They're here to take some notes and watch the council how we run. It's for a project that they're doing. So, welcome, boys, and take good notes because you're going to be our future leaders. You're supposed to laugh. So, tonight, we will be doing a proclamation for Make Music Day. Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry. We do need to mention that we do have a quorum. And so, let the role reflect that all council members are here. Now, we will... Kelly, if you'd like to come up? Today, we are declaring June 21st the as Make Music Day in Hastings, Minnesota. Councilmember Vaughn, you can start.
Whereas, the city of Hastings has declared Friday, June 21st, as Make Music Day, and...
Whereas, this is the third year of the city of Hastings has celebrated Make Music Day. Make Music Day is a free celebration of music around the world on June 21st, beginning in 1982 in France, and is now held on the same day each year in more than 1,000 cities in 120 countries, and...
Whereas, the purpose of Make Music Day is to encourage and invite Hastings residents and visitors to celebrate by enjoying free performances, cultivating civic pride, and a sense of community, and...
Whereas, Make Music Day 2019 will be held from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at various Hastings parks, and the full schedule can be found on the city of Hastings webpage, and...
Whereas, in case of inclement weather, Make Music Day will be held at Art Space Riverlofts, and...
Whereas, local and metro area bands and soloists will be donating their performance, and the city of Hastings is appreciative of these civic-minded performers to help make this event possible, and...
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Hastings hereby declares June 21st, 2019, as Make Music Day in Hastings, Minnesota.
On behalf of everyone who's involved with Make Music Day III, thank you very much for your support. It's a very organic grassroots thing that happens here in Hastings, and everything from a Dixieland band at the Hastings Corner here at the, at City Hall, all the way up to the South Washington Community Band that will end the evening at 9:00 o'clock down on the levee. We just hope that you'll take advantage of these wonderful performances, and you're taking part in a worldwide event. So, thanks very much for Hastings for being one of the Make Music Days locations.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, we will have the swearing-in of Police Sergeant Matt Hendrick. Chief Schaefer?
Good evening, Mayor Fassbender, councilmembers, city staff, friends and family. Tonight, I have the honor of promoting Matt Hendrick to the rank of Sergeant. As I've said before, HPD, or Hastings Police Department, is committed to promoting only the best, and he is no exception to this. Sergeant Hendrick has been a police officer with the city since June of 2013. This was a second career for him. Prior to law enforcement, he served for 17 years on staff as a pastor of a church in Bloomington area. Ten of those years, he was a senior pastor. Matt has been, or has a Bachelor of Arts in Cross-Cultural Studies, a Master's in Christian Thought, and an Associate Science Degree in Law Enforcement. Before being promoted last month, Sergeant Hendrick served as one of our investigators, where he touched nearly 1,100 cases ranging from theft rings, embezzlement, sexual assault, to homicide. Not only was Matt committed to his duties 24/7, he orchestrated two citizens' academies, traveled to some of the state's community colleges to recruit new officers, he worked overtime in some of our safe and sober details, and served on the, and served on the city's Wellness Committee. Hendrick has the strength, vision, and leadership abilities to keep Hastings Police Department moving forward in his new role, and we are absolutely sure that he will carry that torch. I'll now ask Julie Flatlin to step forward and administer the oath.
I'm Matt Hendrick. Do solemnly affirm... That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And the ordinances of the city of Hastings. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police sergeant. For the city of Hastings. For the counties of Dakota and Washington. And the state of Minnesota. According to the best of my judgment and ability. On my honor. I will never betray my badge. My integrity. My character. My character. Or the public trust. I will always have the courage. To hold myself and others accountable. For our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution. My community. And the agency that I serve.
One of the most well-known symbols of policing is the badge. The badge is a symbol of trust and authority given to them by the citizens of Hastings. Tonight, Matt's sergeant badge will be pinned on by his wife, Tammy. We'll have council step down for a quick photo.
Okay, next, we will introduce our Economic Developer Coordinator. John, welcome.
Take care, Mayor Fassbender, and city councilmembers. Tonight, I have the pleasure to introduce you all to someone you have met over the last couple of months, and that is Rusty Feifield, our new Economic Development Coordinator. Rusty's been with us now for two months. He certainly is no newbie to the profession of economic development. He has a wide range of experiences over 30, 40 years within the business. Within Hastings, he's touched us in the past with development of our downtown plan, the last one in 2002 and the one before that, 1985. He brings with him a wealth of contacts and experiences in working with, with financial systems, tax increment financing, and also a great contact list to reach out to for assistance. And he's been doing a great job of that already on the job in bringing different experiences and reaching out to people within the community. So, at this point, I'd like to call Mr. Rusty Feifield forward, introduce him to people who already know him.
Thank you, Rusty, and I, I can say for myself that I've seen you in the community and heard you've been talking to many, so welcome, and we look forward to your works here for us in Hastings.
Councilmember, are there any corrections for the May 20th meeting?
Seeing none, they are approved. Comments from the audience? Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the council? This now time is for people to speak that has nothing to do with the agenda or the consent agenda. I know Senator Bigum is here to speak with us for a bit.
I am. Thank you, Mayor, and Council. I hope you can see me. I could see Councilmember Brock, so it's okay.
We need a stepstool.
Yeah, we do. So, I just wanted to come and give an update on the legislative session. I was very pleased that we were able to come to a bipartisan agreement on a budget solution before our constitutional deadline of a German on May 20th. It did take a one-day, a long day, special session to then pass the bill. I, I would say that, you know, Minnesota has a divided government, and this budget reflects that. Is this a budget that I would have put together? No. But it is a budget that moves Minnesota forward, and so I think, you know, when, when you come to an agreement, a bipartisan agreement like that, both people get a little bit and don't get everything they want. And so, I think that's kind of what the, the budget reflects, and, and so I, I did support it. And I'm going to just hit a couple highlights for you because I want to be respectful of your time, Madam Mayor. First one is the tax bill. I'm very, very pleased that we were able to restore LGA, Local Government Aid, to the 2002 levels, which will equate to Hastings receiving a little over $100,000. And I think that that is a big deal for the city that will go towards, you know, your budget and, and help with your levy. Another provision that I'm proud of in the tax bill is what I call the Semalage Provision. I know that Semalage name is known here. It's also known in Cottage Grove, and Jean Semalage, who's a farmer in Cottage Grove, brought me an idea saying that, hey, Senator, after eight years of being an ag preserve, if you can get sign-off from the local community, the local zoning authority, so a city township, it would be nice to be able to get out of it right away. You know, farmers are land-rich, cash-poor, a lot of them, and so it's, their investments are in that, their retirements are in that, and it also gives a tool for local communities to be able to work with them on development and help with your 2020 plan. So, a little bit of local control there. The, the other bill that I know is important through the conversations was the transportation bill. It's probably the, the biggest disappointment of the session, which was no new revenue for transportation. And so, that local government aid will hopefully help with trying to fill some of those potholes, Mayor, but it's just kind of a lights-on bill for transportation. But one provision, and I think I'm breaking this news too, if I am correct in, in talking to Nick Egger before, is there is a provision in there that allows for cities to set the speed limits without an engineering and traffic study with MINDOT. So, it gives more local control to cities, which, again, I think is a good thing. A, a couple other things. There was no bonding bill. Bonding bills have to start in the House, and they never sent it over to the Senate, and so that was disappointing too because there was quite a few projects for the city of Hastings in there. But the other thing that I'm hoping will resolve next year besides a bonding bill, because it is a bonding year, is parastate aid. Big deal for cities and counties, and, and the state aid that goes to cities to help offset some of the pension costs for city employees expires in June of next year. And I had an amendment on the tax bill that didn't prevail that extended that to 2048 so that you guys wouldn't be on the hook for that. So, I'm hoping that next year, we're able to fix that through maybe a, a quick pension bill. I still have faith in, in that one, and, and next year, obviously, is a bonding year, and I have faith that we will work together and, and make sure that projects are included in, in a bonding bill. But most importantly, I just want to say thank you. You know, Mayor, constantly in contact with you. I appreciate that, and your openness and accessibility to the, to the council, too, that, you know, really good communication. Appreciate you guys coming up to the Capitol, the emails, the texts, the phone calls. So, in seeing you at events, it, it does make a difference so that I hear from you. And so, I can answer any questions that you have, but I, I just want to be respectful of your time, so.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and, and thank you, Senator, for coming in after all the hours you spent down at the Capitol. I'm sure a lot of them were late and so forth, so I hope you're getting a little bit of rest now that the session is over. But I know that you still have responsibilities going on, on a daily basis. Okay, two things. One, just a clarification. On the LGA, which is Local Government Assistance, for the sake of the public understanding, so we were set at around $720,000 or so. So, you're saying that we got an additional hundred-and-some thousand dollars, then?
Mayor, councilmember, yes.
Okay. You may have misspoke.
Oh.
It, it sounded like it was just all we got was the hundred-and-some thousand.
No, more than, than what you received. I apologize. Yeah.
And for the sake of the public understanding, we've had a longtime policy here in the city not to envelop local government assistance into our annual budget, because it is historically a little bit volatile. It goes up and down, and when it goes down, it can, it can really hurt an annual budget. There are some cities that do plug it in to their general fund. We do not. So, what we do with ours is purchasing of capital outlay, things like fire trucks, police cars, perhaps, I, I don't want to get into it specifically, but we, we don't put it into salaries. We don't put it into the heating bill and so on and so forth. It is completely separate from that general fund, then. Second question I have, and I know I asked you out in the hallway, but I thought, for the sake of the public...
Sure.
This is something that I've been really trying to get established here for the state, and that is the age limit, minimum age limit on smoking...
Yeah.
To try and get it to age 21. There are cities...
Mm-hmm.
They're doing this on their own, and we were kind of told by you and some other legislators that this is something that would be better established through state statute, which I agree with. But, we didn't get it, from what I understand. I wonder if you could explain a little bit about that?
Mayor and councilmember, yeah, it, it didn't proceed to, to the Senate for a vote on it. The one thing we did do was include vaping in the Clean Air Act, and so that, that was a step in the right direction, in my opinion, but the T-21, I did not, did not make it through, and so to the, to the end, across the, across the end line there, so the goal line.
Was there a specific reason? I mean, was it because businesses were afraid they were going to lose money, or what was the, what were the key things that brought it down?
You know, I didn't hear a clear, a clear objection, which is why it's a little surprising to me that it didn't come across. I mean, it has bipartisan support. It's sponsored by Senator Carla Nelson in, out of Rochester, who's a Republican, and then, I believe, in the House, it's Representative Lori Halverson. And so, it's a bipartisan bill. I, I can't tell you why it didn't make it across the, the line, I do, the finish line. I do believe it is something that the, the state should handle just for the sake of continuity on, on that in, in enforcement.
Right, because cities passing ordinances to limit, or have the age limit, really don't have any teeth in, in passing the ordinance. I mean, it is official, but the enforcement aspect of it is just about impossible.
Yeah.
And that's why it is something that needs to happen at the state level. I'm a smoker. I started smoking when I was 16. I quit for seven years, two years, six months, a year, and so forth, but it's a terrible habit that I just can't get rid of. And I truly believe that if that was a statute 1,000 years ago when I was 16, perhaps I wouldn't have picked up such a bad habit. So, I, I know you're in favor of the, of the age limit, and I, I hope that something happens in the next session. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, you councilmember Balsanik. Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for bringing that up, Joe, because I was going to ask the same thing as to where we were with the no tobacco until you're 21. And I, and since we've had that discussion, I'd just like to re-bring it up because it did go before the Public Safety Commission, and recommendations were brought forward, but we were kind of on hold until this legislative session had come and gone. And I just heard on Minnesota Public Radio a couple days ago that Duluth passed their own ordinance, and they were like the 22nd or 23rd city within the state to do so. And so, for us to, to relook at that, I would be in favor of that. Senator Bigum, I had a question in regards to 316 funding. And as you had mentioned, there were a couple of items that were in the bonding bill that we were hoping for, that was on the House side. Funding for the Hastings City Hall for some improvements that need to be made. We need to save our dome. It's already beginning to leak. And then, the other was Highway 316, helping with some of the gap funding. And so, I was just looking at the League of Cities website today, and it said on there that, that they were hoping that a bonding bill would have provided transportation funds for the local road improvement program. And that's one grant program that we were hoping that our staff, you know, they had already put a, a grant in for that to help with some of the funding as well. And so, I was just looking for, what is your perspective? Because we need to begin to start planning for both Highway 316 and then what to do with the restoration of this building. And so, any thoughts? Because things aren't going to really change next year necessarily so much when it comes to transportation funding. It was pretty clear that, that there wasn't a lot of room for negotiations on moving forward on the gas tax that would have provided some of that funding. So, I'm just looking forward to your insights. How do we plan for some, just comments, you know, random thoughts as to, you know, what your thoughts are on these issues?
Sure. Mayor and councilmember Fults, I would say that traditionally, in a budget year, which is what we just wrapped up, there is a small bonding bill, and that did not happen. So, next year is a full bonding year. Now, one of the benefits that would have been good to have a small bonding bill this year when we have AAA bond rating, so you have lower bonding rates, you also can knock off some of those local projects for next year and make room for other projects for next year. So, that's not going to happen. So, now, the competition is going to be greater for those limited funds for next year. But next year is our traditional bonding year, so I think continuing the, the conversations that the mayor and myself, the administration have had, and Representative Jergens have had with trying to get that gap funding fixed, continuing to keep that pressure on in those conversations. With no new revenue, I think it's going to be difficult. I haven't had the opportunity yet to kind of circle back with MINDOT and with the city to see where conversations are on, on that since session ended a, a week ago. So, I, my, my hope is that, you know, we're able to have a, a bonding bill next year that would include some of these projects, but the competition's going to be tough.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Bigum, and also, I'd like to thank you for always being a strong supporter of local government, and thank you for voting to support local government aid and for us to have that extra benefit. And I actually have the sheet here I can pass around to the council that shows it's an additional $122,000. And so, we go to $841,000 for next year. So, thank you for that.
No problem, and I, I appreciate the dialogue and, and look forward to speaking again before, before session and maybe have a legislative priority meeting again. That would be great. I enjoyed that last year, or, yeah, earlier this year, so.
Any other comments, counsel? Councilmember Joe Balsanik?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So, regarding our request for the dome improvements, we, we can't just sit back and wait. You, you want us to come up with another application, so on and so forth, for, for next year?
Mayor and councilmember Balsanik, I'll see if the administrator wants to, to answer for the city on their plan for that.
Okay.
But I will support whatever the city wants to do.
Yep. Sure. Councilmember Balsanik, we were recently approached this past week, letting us know that the Chair of the Capital Investment Committee, that myself and City Planner Fortney testified against, just encouraged us, gave us a lot of encouraging words about both of our projects, that they were high on her priority list, and we have until June 14th to get those submitted for inclusion in next year's bill, so we're working on that.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you again, Senator, and look forward to seeing you around the community, as I always do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council items to be considered, or first of all, I should ask, is there any other comments in the audience? Okay, with that, we'll move to council. Any other items to be considered? Okay, then we can move to the consent agenda. I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Balsanik, councilmember Brock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. Tonight, we have a public hearing to vacate land on Adams Street South and Third Street. John, welcome again.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilmembers. Tonight, this is a public hearing for a vacation of right-of-way. That may look familiar to you. We vacated a portion of this last year. We are looking at a location here along Adams Street between Third Street and Lake Isabel. The red area represents the area to be vacated, which is half of the right-of-way south of the improved alley. So, within this red area here, it was platted as right-of-way 150 years ago. There's no practical evidence of a right-of-way there. There's no utilities. There's no improvements within there. And the reason why we're seeking the vacation tonight is the location of this home here by Mr. John Steer. The home has been here for quite some time. I think there was an original structure there in the 1880s, a home reconstructed out of that during the 1940s. When we looked at this originally, which was the vacation of a portion of this right-of-way to the south, the maps that we had did not show accurately the location of this house and its encroachment within the right-of-way. So, we assumed the house was outside the right-of-way and would not be an issue. But when we looked at this again with more accurate surveys, did find this encroachment within there. So, essentially, the city's right-of-way here is encroached by 17 feet of this house. Really serves no practical value. So, we have a, a joint application ahead of us for the vacation of the alley by both neighbors, the Helgots to the west, the Steers to the east, to vacate this portion. We are supportive of that tonight. We did have the DNR provide comment on this as are we are required under state statute because we are vacating a right-of-way adjacent to a public waterway. They did submit a letter stating they do not object to the vacation as proposed. So, we are supportive of the vacation tonight. This is a public hearing. You can open it at this time. We also have Mr. Steer and the Helgots here if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? If none, I will close the public hearing. And counsel, we have now time to discuss if there's anything to discuss. Okay. Seeing none, I will, oh, I'll accept a motion, sorry. Councilmember Balsanik?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion to have the city vacate the property in question.
Second? Councilmember Leifeld? Any additional discussion, counsel? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails. Okay, next, we will consider the installation of water disinfection system and consider authorizing the work to proceed. Nick, welcome to the meeting.
Thanks, Mayor Fassbender. Good evening, council-
Good evening, councilmembers. Allow me just a moment here to get to my presentation. Oops. There we go. So, tonight, the council has the, before you, the consideration of implementing permanent water disinfection on the city's distribution system via a gas chlorination method. Just gonna run quickly through the sequence of events. By now, everyone on the dais is very familiar with it and I think most of the community are too. But nonetheless, I'll take a short trip through the history and what we've been doing here. Following the contamination incident that we had in late September last year, city did have to go through some steps in conjunction and working with the Department of Health to evaluate the system and determine whether there were any deficiencies there that, that led to the incident being more probable. Fortunately for us, we did work through what's called an EPA Level Two Assessment Review process and that found that the way that we operate the system and care for it didn't have any deficiencies. Nonetheless, city staff were directed to work on bringing forward a feasibility study of various disinfection means and methods, treatment options for the city council to consider. Of course, the overarching objective of all that is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So, we ran through, starting in November, I think it was, we, we began looking at this hiring StanTech as our consultant, expertise in the industry. We looked at a variety of different choices that could be made, a couple of which involved use of chlorine, a couple which involved other technologies for disinfection, the option of doing a, what's called a shock chlorination, which is a very temporal but acute introduction of chlorine into the system for a short period of time, filtration options, very aggressive inspection and enforcement of plumbing codes and cross-connection regulations within all city properties, and of course, the option of doing nothing. The city also held a lot of discussion amongst the council as the study came back in January. We held workshops in late January and also on March fourth to educate the council and offer a good amount of time for Q and A on the topic and on the results of the study. And we did do a, a very extensive amount of public outreach all throughout the incident from when we had the, the event occur in September up to this very day with items on our city website, various social media posts, working with local and metro area media to get word out and, and Q and A on that, and then the hundreds of phone calls that were had by city staff during the event and thereafter. And then lastly, that came forward with a public open house that we had just about two months ago to bring forward the recommendation of staff and the feasibility study. We kind of used a evaluation matrix, if you will, among the different options. You've seen this. I don't expect anybody here to read it as it's on the screen. This is available on the city website and I did include it with your packet, but in essence, we listed out the various options and we, we asked very specific questions about that option's ability to address certain things, costs, logistics, et cetera. And ultimately, staff is recommending that we move forward on implementing gas chlorination, which is a little different than what we've currently been doing. Again, we've had a, a low-dose liquid chlorination method used ever since the event, just as an extra precaution and with advisement of our experts in the industry as well as at the Department of Health. But the disinfection on the, the distribution system is the ultimate goal of that implementation. Chlorination is a way to combat threats of, that are in the microbiological form, viruses, bacteria, et cetera. And it's utilized to be effective at, at disinfecting the water from its point of, the source point where we bring it up from the ground through wells and transport it all the way to the tap at properties throughout the city. What we, we have is a pretty good-sized system in the city of Hastings, about ninety miles worth of water mains and seventy-five-hundred-plus different service connections. And all of that is vulnerable to threats such as those that I mentioned and other things. And believe it or not, the city is the, currently the largest populated city in the state that didn't have an ongoing permanent disinfection system in place. So, that in combination with considering the consequences that could become if we had another event take place, the recommendation of the Department of Health, and thinking about things such as the socioeconomic impacts that there would be if we had another event occur. It's not just about public health, although that reigns supreme, it's about the business impact that there could be of having to shut down the system from use should an event occur. Gas chlorination's a very effective technology, been used worldwide in some places for a hundred years, plus or minus. It's proven and safe technology, it's got a great track record. The gas chlorination's a little easier to do dosing control with the equipment than is the liquid option. And so, we can't guarantee this, but we think that that gives us possibly better opportunity to control some of the taste and odor issues that some folks in the public have experienced. And I will note, as we've said before, taste and odor sensitivity is about as infinitely variable as every person. So, there, there is, is not a way to guarantee that it'll totally eliminate that issue. It does have a lower cost of operations and maintenance compared to the liquid option and the effort that's required to manage it is a bit lower as well. So, and looking at that as, in terms of a cost effectiveness in, of any of the disinfection methods that we had available at our disposal, it was the one that had the, the, the best cost effectiveness at, at combating the problem. We estimate the upfront costs and there is a bit of design work that would have to occur yet as we bring forward final plans, but capital cost to be four hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then the annual operating cost thereafter, about forty-four thousand dollars. And I've put a couple of notes there just to show that at present, the city does have the funding on the capital side of things to cover that. As for the operating cost, it's a relatively small figure and something we can incorporate into fee structure. So where are we? Of course, tonight, you're considering the final decision on this. If it were approved, the full implementation of all the system changes would take approximately a year, we think, hopefully a little sooner than that. But we do, like I mentioned, would have to go through a final design process, put the project out for bids, and then conduct a construction activity. And this is at five different sites in the city. We have four wellhouses that would need to be retrofitted as well as placement of some equipment at the water treatment plant. Those are all of the outbound locations that we have for water supply in the city. So, with that, I can stand for questions and I can turn it back to you, Mayor Fassbender.
Thank you, Nick. Council, any discussion? Councilmember Lythell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Nick. I know we've had a lot of conversations, so I'll keep this brief, but for anyone who's listening and following along, I know one of the conversations we had was, one, multiple options for us to choose. We didn't go with the, the cheapest of options. We went with what we felt was best for the community. And I believe we looked at down the road. We talked nitrates, we've talked other things. We want to make sure, I know we talked about if we fix something, which we need to do, we need to fix this, we need to take care of this problem, five years, ten years, are we in a position that will help us? Are we doing something today that we can easily add on to or, I, I'm not sure which, you might be able to better explain it, but...
Yeah, I think maybe the central question there is whether this handcuffs us in any way of implementing other treatment technologies if those issues were to come up. And the answer to that would be no. This equipment can be reutilized if we ever had to add on other components at these locations or the water treatment plant to include other treatment technologies.
Excellent answer. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Councilmember Lythell. Any, yes, Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, can you just clarify, you said the upfront cost is four hundred and forty thousand dollars. You said it's gonna come from existing funds. Is that, could you tell me what account that's gonna be coming out?
That is our water, our trunk water fund. So this is the one that is funded by WAC charges and we utilize that for big equipment expansions or implementations in the city such as treatment.
And, Your Honor, follow-up question then. Do you see us affecting that account for a future project that we have to push off a little bit because that fund's getting, is it getting depleted or is it gonna be stabilized enough for us to continue with the normal operation that we have to do?
Given this, it was pretty much an unexpected thing. I would put the answer to that as the former, that we very likely, if something were to happen in the near term that we'd have to work on, we'd have to come up with a strategy to finance that diff, in a different way. But rate, rates and rate structure is something that I know we're going to be exploring in the 2020 cycle, I believe. Am I correct, Julie? So, we can address that question there, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was going along the same thoughts there of Councilmember Vaughn and I just wanted to talk for a moment about anticipated costs moving forward and just to clarify that there's really two issues at hand that residents are going to see, how we're moving to this gas chlorination and we're currently already chlorinating, but it's the liquid form. And so, there are a number of folks who are concerned, they have some anxiety about, you know, what does this mean, having long-term chlorination? And I am hopeful that we will begin to see less odor, you know, within our, our water. And just recently, I had gone in, of all things, to get my hair cut and I was ready to chop her all off because it's gotten so brittle on the end. And, and I was talking with Beth Warner, who owns the Elm Salon just across City Hall here, and she was telling me that one of the also benefits of going to the gas chlorination is that we'll see less of an impact to our skin and also on our hair, hopefully. And so, I was encouraged to hear that from her. But the, the one point I wanted to talk about was the, the matter of having to plan for the, the chlorination of our system and then also how the city was already planning for a small increase within our pay, our utilities payment structure, our fee structure, where we were looking at a five percent increase. And that decision was made two years ago, I want to say, a year and a half ago.
Councilmember Fults, I, we, that's the increase that you did have two years ago. We're still evaluating for what we'll be recommending as part of the 2020 budget.
Sure, yep. So just to be clear, because I think that there's residents who are concerned that they think that the water rate increases that we've seen the last year have had to deal with, with the ECOI breakout. And just to clarify that it, it hasn't been, it's been two separate issues, so that residents are, are aware of that. And I hope that we continue to communicate, you know, exactly what's going on so that we're as transparent as possible. So thanks. And thank you, Nick, for all of your work and thank you to the StanTech representatives as well for helping us.
Thank you, Councilmember Fults. Discussion, Lori, Councilmember Brax?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just also like to extend, I'm very thankful for all the communication that has been planned and all the outreach that has been done to include the public in this process. I think all of us recognize that the options are difficult and that it's, we're really not, we don't have any great options in front of us that would allow us to be chemical-free, which I know is desire of some people, that we aren't introducing any new chemicals into the water that would negatively impact our health. But I think when we've talked about this and we've looked at the options, doing nothing is not an option. And I think that, I can only speak for myself, but I believe that the council has come to that conclusion and that's why we've landed on this option that's in front of us tonight. And I think we're doing it for a lot of good reasons. We want to protect people's health, we want to protect the health of the community and that's our primary concern, but also we have to think about the future and other threats that are coming down the line. And although we're spending this money, it's probably not going to stop here because we have other things to be concerned about, like PFAS and nitrates. And so, because water is something that touches each one of us and is so significant and important, I think the outreach that we've done and the conversations that have been had have been very good. I'm very appreciative of Nick and Lee Stoffel, who, who've done a lot of the coordinating, and Julie, to reach out to the public and include them in the conversation. And I think that's our goal for any issue, especially one that's as large as this one. So, I think you should pat yourselves on the back. And even though we're coming with an option that is very scientifically based and may not be pleasing to everybody, I think we're choosing something that is for the health of the community and will protect us for the future. So I just wanted to say thank you and just explain a little bit about what our thought process has been.
Thank you, Councilmember Brax. Any, Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I, and I think the public needs to know, too, that this was not a cost-driven bit of research. We, we never, as a council, said, you know, keep it at this amount of money. It, it was all based on what's gonna be the most efficient way to control this in terms of installation and then in terms of annual, annual staff time in addition to money. You know, the options that were out there ranged from a hundred and ninety-five thousand, this, I sound like a real bureaucrat here, I suppose. This system is going to cost approximately four hundred and forty thousand dollars with an annual cost of about forty-four thousand dollars. There were other systems that were looked at, three million, seven hundred thousand, fifteen million to twenty million. And so I think we landed on a very cost-effective system that is also going to be relatively comfortable to operate. So, it, and as Councilmember Brax said, thank you so much for all the work that you folks did down at Public Works. This was not something that, you know, was within, I mean, it's within your job description, but it's, it's like you got other things to do and suddenly, boom, this thing just kind of came out of no place. And you handed, handled it superbly. So thank you very much to your staff. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have much more to add that hasn't already been stated, but, you know, Nick had mentioned a list of options and then, of course, doing nothing. And I, I want to point out that that wasn't just a, you know, something you had to put down as a bullet point. We did discuss doing nothing at length. It was legitimately on the table and as a, as a viable option. We spent a great deal of time learning a lot of things that I never expected to have to learn from legitimate sources and hearing all sides of the arguments, too. And they were all considered. In the end, however this may go down, it wasn't for lack of diligence or consideration or options, even doing nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Lund. And I will add to that, Nick, you know, thank you and your staff and all the departments that worked with it. You know, it's hard in a community like us that we've never had anything to worry about, about, this is a public safety issue. So I thank your staff for being the utmost professional and your due diligence for making our community and for us mindful of what we're here to do. So, council, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the authorization, signatures, and order work to proceed. Councilmember Brax, Councilmember Fults? Additional council discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Oh, council, yes?
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. I did intend for the authorization on the StanTech, the final design work to be separate from the, the decision itself to implement the chlorination because one was dependent on the other. Am I, maybe I'll ask for help from Julie or Dan on whether the, the action that just took place is, is okay or... And my, maybe I'll ask for help from Julie or Dan on whether the, the action that just took place is, is okay, or...
I think the way the, well, I would see that the original motion that was made was to, to authorize the installation of the water system disinfectant, and maybe the movers of the motion could confirm that. But I would say that we should also confirm that the contract should be, I would be inclined to have a second motion on that just to clarify that the STAN Tech contract is approved.
Okay. Councilmember Bolsonic?
Did you want me to speak to the original motion?
If you...
The original motion that I made was to accept staff recommendation to implement permanent ongoing disinfection of the water distribution system by way of gas chlorination.
So I think that confirms that that was the intent of the, of the number one under 1A. And we should still have the second action to authorize the signatures on the, on the professional contract.
Okay, so hearing that, I'll need a motion. Councilmember Bolsonic? And Councilmember Vaughn, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. Thank you again, Nick. Tonight, we have with us Jim Miller, who will provide us an update for the city administrator hiring process. Welcome, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor Fosbender, members of the city council. And thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening to do three, I think, critically important things in the process of helping you find a new city administrator. First, I want to give you an update. As you know, the application period closed on Friday, May 31st. And in a moment, I'll tell you the results of our efforts of recruitment, which went on for about a month. But let me, before I get into that, just tell you that really hadn't dawned on me till I was here this evening and listening to this previous discussion about disinfecting your water system. And I'm still very much a local government geek because I found it really interesting. So I, I think, I guess when you spend forty-some years in local government, maybe it's hard to break the habit. In addition to the update, what I would like to do is get your direction importantly on two things. One is more immediately critical, but both are essential to making this process ultimately come to the kind of conclusion that you've, you've charged me with helping you, you arrive at. First, we need to resolve how interviews with semifinalist candidates are going to be handled. You've received a detailed memorandum from me that hopefully explains the options that I see available for your consideration this evening. And I'm certainly happy to go to answer any questions you might have about those options. I can also, when we get to that point, explain my preference for one of the options over the other two and, and the reasoning for that. And then the third thing that I'm seeking your direction on is the interviews with finalists and the process that was outlined in that memo. Again, we have plenty of time certainly to resolve that, but it's getting to the point where it'll be critical. I know that all of you have incredibly busy schedules. And if we, if we can resolve how we're going to proceed with the final interview process and we can agree on dates, that would be a major step forward in, in getting the, the process moving forward. Well, let me tell you a little bit about the efforts to find you a new city administrator. Some of this, or most of it, you're, you're familiar with. But people that are here or people that may be watching this presentation may be interested to know. We've, we recruited for basically a month, both on a national and a Minnesota basis, to find interested candidates in the vacancy that you have for city administrator. And the sources that we use to place ads were strategic in the sense that they were all, in one way or another, either exclusively local government affiliated organizations or they were more broadly government-related organizations. That said, as you'll see when I, I give you a little more detail in a moment, we had a broad range of applications. We certainly have people from the private sector that have applied, as well as, as you would expect, primarily people with governmental backgrounds. But we, we placed ads with the League of Minnesota Cities, the Association of Minnesota Counties, the International City County Management Association, Government Jobs, the Minnesota City County Management Association. In addition, I contacted somewhere between 20 and 30 individuals that I encourage to take a, a look at this particular opening and to answer any questions that they may have. I did have conversations with a number of people. And in a couple of cases, I think at least, that resulted in some applications coming forward. In several other cases, people that I think would have been outstanding candidates along with the people that did apply weren't available at this point. I was going to say interested, but that isn't the correct word because their lack of application had absolutely nothing to do with the attractiveness of the Hastings position. It had to do with their own personal circumstances and unique in each case. But as I said, as a result, originally I had indicated that I thought we would get about 40 applications when we began this process. As of Friday, the deadline, we have 43 applications. So, pretty close to, to what we expected. I am not, as the council knows, but again, for the, for the benefit of people who may be interested in this presentation, I'm not able to disclose names or to give you specific information at this point. That information is protected by law, as your city attorney can certainly expound on if, if you would like. But I can give you kind of a general 30,000-foot overview of what, what we received. Of the 43 applications, 33 were male, 10 were female. 20 were experienced or are experienced as either city administrators or city, city managers. And I think two or three were assistants but had not yet been a manager or an assistant. Several come from, in, in a couple of cases, very extensive state backgrounds. And we also have, as I mentioned, a number from the, the private sector, at least several from the private sector. 21 of the candidates are from Minnesota, which means, I guess, that 22 are from outside Minnesota. Again, not necessarily an unusual array as far as, as my experience would indicate. Most of the candidates have graduate degrees. A number of them have multiple graduate degrees. More commonly, or most commonly, I guess I would say, it's a master's in public administration along with a JD degree. Although there are at least three candidates from my recollection that have PhDs. And one, at least one candidate has three master's degrees in various fields. Education in and of itself, as I've told the administrative committee when we've had this conversation, is not a, a, it's an indicator, but it is not something that, in my opinion, can be relied on too heavily in determining who the best candidates are. So while it's impressive that we have so many people with graduate-level degrees, on, on one hand, it's not unexpected for this level of position. And secondly, it isn't, it is something we will look at, but it is not something that necessarily leads us to look exclusively at those candidates. Eight of the candidates, I'm sorry, five had JD degrees. Eight had either a BA or a BS degree. Most often, that was either in engineering or, or accounting, were the two primary fields. Although there are a couple that were in, in, had undergraduate degrees in, in another field. Friday was the deadline, that was the 31st. Over the weekend, I have been reviewing all of the applications, and of course, I have as they've been coming in. But I am in the process of setting up interviews with, at this moment, 10 of the candidates, phone interviews that I want to conduct. And the purpose of those interviews is to help me complete the report that you will receive for your June 17th meeting, which will be a detailed summary report listing each and every candidate who applied, whether I think you should consider them further or not. You will get their names, you'll get their positions, you'll get the years of experience they've had. You will get some comments based on either my observations from the written materials they've submitted or from the written materials and my discussions with people who may know them. Or in some cases, from the actual phone interviews. The phone interviews I will be conducting will be with the people that I would recommend that you consider as semifinalists when we get to that point. So again, you will have that in time for your June 17th meeting. And what you do with that is really the, the outcome of the decision that hopefully you're prepared to make this evening in terms of how we handle, excuse me, semifinalist applications. Maybe I'll stop there for a moment and ask if there's any questions just on that piece of the presentation before I move into some comments about the options that I see available for you on, on interviewing semifinalist candidates. Be happy to do that.
Counsel?
Again, unfortunately, I can't get terribly specific, but I can, I'll get as specific as I think I can. Well, let me, before we get into talking about options, again, more for the benefit of your, of the audience here this evening or watching, just very, very quickly tell you the, the dilemma that faces any city council. This isn't exclusive to what you're doing. But any city council in Minnesota that is wanting to think about interviews with semifinalist candidates to determine usually a smaller number of finalists that you would then interview. There are a couple of laws in Minnesota that come into play. One, the open meeting law, which many people, of course, are, are familiar with, which requires the, anytime there's more than, there's a majority or more of the council meeting, to have that, that meeting in open. And then there's the Data Practices Act, which requires that candidate information be kept confidential until those candidates are selected as finalists. So immediately begin to see the, the dilemma that that can create. It means that if the entire city council were to try and interview, and you can, it is an option, if the city council were to try and interview applicants that are considered as semifinalists, not designated as finalists yet, you could not reveal their names, you could not reveal anything that might disclose what is considered to be private information at that point. It's possible, it can be done, but it's basically referring to candidate A or candidate C. And it's not, from my experience, the most meaningful use of your time or certainly of the candidates as well. So the options, excuse me, that, that I think are available are, are three. One, the council itself, as I mentioned, could hold the interviews with semifinalists. Having that in the public setting, as we talked about, can be unwieldy at best. But again, I want to underscore, it is an option, it is something that can be done. Alternatively, you could consider having those interviews conducted by less than a majority of the council. Sometimes councils will do that one-on-one, so in kind of a round robin where each of you meet. But again, any discussion of the interviews that you have would have to be public. And from my experience, and I guess from my own personal value system, it is not an option that I think is particularly attractive. I think it can create, at a minimum, the appearance with the public that this is trying to subvert the intent of the two laws we talked about. And it isn't, on top of that, a very effective, very efficient way to use your time or the candidate's time. But it is an option. Another way that you could proceed would be to just say, all right, given the dilemma that you've, you've talked about, we'll just declare seven or eight or six or however many semifinalists we talk about on the 17th to be finalists. And we'll have two rounds of interviews. First round will be with those finalists to narrow down to a smaller group to have a second interview. That's more streamlined. The potential issue with that is having a larger number of candidates, let's say, for sake of discussion, eight or so, which is probably what I will be recommending to you. Candidates are sometimes leery of having their names made public at that point in the process. Every recruitment I have done, I always have conversations with several candidates who say, you know, I just, I'm not sure. I don't want to get my name out there too publicly because I've got a great council, but I've been a candidate once before and they were understanding, but I don't know how many times I can do this. So it's a, it's a decision that obviously we can't make for candidates. But if a candidate understands that he or she is in a pool of six or eight candidates versus a pool of four, sometimes they'll arrive at the decision to say, take me out of the process. So I think it's advantageous for you in terms of getting the best candidates, if you want to have two interviews, to have them in a way that protects the private nature of the applicant, of the applicants at, at that point. And the third or, or second option that you could, you could select would be for me to give you a recommendation on the number of finalists that you should interview. I don't particularly like that option because I think it's, whether it's me or any consultant standing here making this presentation to you, it's, it goes beyond really what I think is the appropriate role for a consultant in this, in this incredibly important decision that you as a council are going to, going to be making in a, in a relatively short period of time. It's expedient, it'll, it'll get you there quickly, and I think you'd have good candidates, I'm, I'm comfortable in that. But I don't like the process personally, but it's, it's your decision, obviously, not mine. So the preferred method, at least my preferred method, and I, I, I think this is a way that really can kind of solve that dilemma that we talked about, have the candidates' data protected as semifinalists, get a look at candidates on more than, in more than one interview, and ultimately result in the best selection process for you as a city council, is for you to have a subcommittee of the city council, less than a majority, do that, do that, do, do those interviews with semifinalists. If that is the preferred alternative after our discussion this evening, I want to underscore again that the selection of the finalists, at least from my recommendation, would be made by the entire council. So on the, on the 17th, we will have a discussion, again, it'll be one where we can't get into a lot of information. But you will see what my recommendations are in terms of semifinalists. You'll also have, I should say that, that the report will be, will break the, the candidates are, will, will list the candidates in three separate categories. There'll be those that I think are ones that really should be highly considered as semifinalists. There'll be a group that I think are qualified, but relatively not as much as the ones that are in that higher group. But again, certainly the council could say, you know, I know this person and he or she would be a great candidate and I think we ought to put him or her in that top pool, and you could certainly do that. So the point is, on the 17th, the list is yours to construct. I'm going to do a lot of work ahead of time to hopefully help you with that decision, but it'll be your list. Then, if you go again with this process, the, the committee, less than a majority of the council, which I think is being recommended to you as reconstitution of your administrative committee as an ad hoc selection committee or interview committee, would then interview those candidates and would make recommendation to you as a body for finalist interviews. Finalist interviews would be conducted by you as, as a, as a group. And then you, as the appointing authority, would ultimately make the decision and make the appointment of that person selected to be your next city administrator. So that's kind of a quick overview of the options that I see available for you. And obviously, your, your city attorney may have some, some thoughts about the process that, because I'm not an attorney and I don't want to try and represent anything legally to you about the process. Happy to answer any questions. But again, my recommendation is that you take the action to reconstitute, that you appoint an ad hoc committee. And as I understand it, the discussion has been to reconstitute the administrative committee, which makes sense given the fact that they've been involved with this recruitment process from the outset to serve in that capacity. So.
Thank you, Jim. Council discussion? Councilmember Brax?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to lend my support to the recommendation of Mr. Miller. To go with, in our notes, it's in his memo that he provided, it would be option C, to designate the administrative committee to interview semifinalists. I think this is the most fair way to do it that does comply with open meeting law and data practices act, to the best of my understanding, which both protects the identity of the applicant and also allows us to get a, a first view into who the candidates are. I feel like the process that you've outlined also allows for later input as we approach the finalist stage with, I think is, is an important phase for the, both the coun- the finalist stage with, I think is is an important phase for the both the city council and the public to be involved in choosing the final candidate. So I don't think that this option takes anything away from the council, and I am very supportive of it as the chair of the administrative committee, although I am open to other council members' opinions and views on this, I've had a little more time to think about it, so they might have some input or feedback, but I would certainly, as the administrative committee chair, be supportive of of that option.
Thank you, Councilmember Brax. Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I I agree, it's there's not a lot of other options that make a ton of sense for legal and and also just flow reasons and so forth, so I'd I'd like to make a a motion to have the ad hoc committee comprised of administrative committee members to conduct the interviews of the semifinalists.
Councilmember Lund. Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a matter of discussion is that I sit on the administrative committee, and I would normally be very happy, you know, to do this. Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of state June twentieth through the twenty-third, I'm taking my son down to the Air Force Academy, he's been invited for a hockey showcase camp that weekend, so I'm not going to miss that, unfortunately, I won't be here. So if the date has already been chosen as the twenty-second, I can't make it that particular date, but as long as it's not the twentieth through the twenty-third, I can make it.
Councilmember Lund, Jim, I think we still plan to work out the dates. We had it scheduled, and we'll be collecting everyone's vacation schedules and working to get it set.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Should not exclude you, we'll consider that as part.
Okay, I'm good with either way, I hate to ask. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Vaughn, did you have something to? No? Councilmember Bolsonak?
Good.
So we have a motion?
More discussion?
Any more discussion from council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And thank you to the administration committee for your future time and efforts to pick our number one person, so. And thank you, Jim, too, for
You're welcome.
All your reading and your materials that you've, I'm sure your your eyes are sore at the end of the night.
Well, it's it's rewarding. I think you're you've got some good candidates there, and I don't think you're going to be disappointed. And I don't know, Mayor Fossbender, whether you want to talk about the finalist interviews tonight, we don't necessarily have to get that set, but all of these pieces kind of fit together, and as I mentioned in the memo, well, there's latitude to accommodate schedule issues like we just heard about. We also we also need to be fairly diligent about getting this nailed down before too much time goes 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 on, because you start losing candidates, obviously, and you don't want to sacrifice either way. You don't you don't want the process to drive what happens to applicants, but you don't want to be a slave to the process either, so. I'm fine with it, if you if you want to get the administrative committee, I mean, the ad hoc committee interviews scheduled first and then have a discussion about when you want to do those finalist interviews, we can plug that in. I don't need to know that at this point, but it's the pieces that come after the interview with the semifinalists take a certain amount of time to do the background investigations, and that'll determine the soonest we can have the the interviews.
So you can go ahead and state it now, then?
Okay. The dates that we have, based on the revised schedule, and they're just suggestions, well, let me parenthetically say that generally, both councils and candidate, well, the process I'm recommending is a two-day process. The two-day process doesn't involve the council for the entire two days, but it does for part of the first day and a majority of the second day when you would be doing the actual interviews. The process that I have recommended to both provide the transparency that I know you're looking for and to allow as many people as possible to have an opportunity to have input into the selection of the new city administrator is generally as follows. Usually on a Friday, the candidates would meet in the morning at City Hall, they would then be given a tour of the community by your management team, your department directors, perhaps have a lunch, a box lunch at City Hall with the department directors after the tour. Later in the afternoon, have an open house for the community and invite people to come in and meet the candidates. It would be informal, they wouldn't be doing presentations or interview, but it would give people an opportunity to meet these three or four finalists that you have identified at that point. That evening, and this this is optional, but it has proven to be useful, I think, to other councils, you host a social event that by its nature has to be open because you would all be there, but it's really intended to give you an opportunity to see the candidates in a little bit different environment than in a kind of artificial construct that you have when you do a formal interview, and it's just one more opportunity for you to get a feel for who these these people are. So while it would be public, necessarily have to be public, the primary intent would be for the council to have an opportunity to meet these people, and not necessarily, you could, if you wanted, I suppose, have a dinner, but those usually don't work out very well, but something with hors d'oeuvres and a cash bar or something is is usually what councils opt for. And then the following day, if that were Saturday, you would do the actual interviews. The council as a whole would interview the each candidate individually, they would they would not be in the room when the other candidates are interviewing, so. And then if if those, excuse me, if those interviews go well, you could be in a position as soon as that afternoon to make a decision and begin negotiations with a successful candidate. Doesn't always follow that quickly and doesn't have to follow that quickly, but if the stars lined up absolutely one and one right after another, that could be that could be what happens. So given the schedule, the revised schedule that we've put together, and again, I want to want to stress, we can, it's your schedule, but given what we've talked about, I'm currently looking at Friday, July twelfth, for that all-day event, and Saturday, July thirteenth, for the interviews with the entire city council. But if if the ad hoc committee dates need to be pinned down first, maybe maybe that is maybe that should occur, and then you can have a follow-up discussion to see if these dates actually work or we can slide them. And there's nothing sacred about Friday and Saturday. It seems to work well for candidates, and it generally works well for most council members, but not always, of course, so it's, again, it's your schedule, so we'll do it however you want to. So that is all I have to say.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are we looking to come to consensus on direction or?
For the final dates?
Yeah.
No. I think that's going to be in further discussion.
That's what I'm asking. Do we need to come to consensus that it's going to be discussed at a later date?
Oh, sorry. Yes, it will be.
Okay.
The finalization of those dates will be in our future, right? Okay, council, do we have any announcements? Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to give an update. About a month ago, the League of Minnesota Cities had put out a notice that they had an opportunity for elected officials to apply. They had a vacancy on the Governor's Council on connected and automated vehicles available, and so I had placed an application, and I was actually selected by the Executive Committee of the League to be appointed to that particular council, and so I'm excited because, you know, one of the reasons I wanted to do it is my background. I worked for the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety for ten years, so I have a lot of experience in evaluating, you know, fatal crash scenes and driving behaviors and working with law enforcement and public health officials across the state, so I think it's a great fit. But what I thought was really unique to Hastings is just that when we looked to the Met Council, the Met Council tells us that it'll be at least twenty forty, you know, before we'll possibly get a bus stop here, and it doesn't look like the results of the East Transit study that's occurring are really viable at this point, as well as something coming our way in the near future, and so I thought, you know, perhaps this might be the ticket where technology might actually catch up before the transit system does and might be an option for our community sometime in the next ten years, where automated vehicles might be a way, you know, for us to be able to help those folks within our community that have difficulties with transportation internally, and then also, you know, as a as a way maybe to get to their destinations if they're, you know, up in the metro area or elsewhere. So more to come, but I'm I'm excited and and I look forward to this opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, and congratulations. Councilmember Bolsonak?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Committee of the council is meeting this Thursday morning, the sixth, at seven thirty a.m. in the volunteer room. I'm I'm getting cued by our development director. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, any others? Okay. Also, planning commission will meet Monday, June tenth, at seven p.m. The summer kickoff celebration will be Tuesday, June eleventh, beginning at five thirty, and that's at Levy Park, which, if you haven't been online to see all the events going on at the pavilion, you should, I mean, it's wonderful to see, so that's the first kickoff night. So HEDRO will meet on Thursday, June thirteenth, at six p.m., and our next council meeting is June seventeenth. Okay, with that, I will have a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Lund and Councilmember Brax. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Whoops, shut me.